Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, September 24, 2025 Lawrence Douglas County Planning Commission meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and I will turn it over to Becky Pepper for the rules of the game.
Thank you Chair and good evening everyone. Please silence your cell phones to minimize distraction during the meeting. When the Chair calls for public comment, please approach the podium to indicate that you wish to speak. Virtual participants should use the raised hand function to indicate that they wish to speak during public comment. Once your name is called, please unmute and turn on your camera to provide your comments. Please state your name before speaking. The city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute participants. All comments will be limited to three minutes. The primary format to access and participate in this meeting is in-person at City Hall. Virtual access to view or participate in the meeting cannot be guaranteed. The chat function will not be monitored. If you have any trouble, the meeting can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25.
Thank you Becky. We have no general business so we'll move into communications. Jeff, is there any written communication from the public?
Yes, we did have one, a deferral request by the applicant for item number two, which was for the special use permit at 1041 and 1037 New Hampshire Street. The applicant's still working on some of the details and would like to defer that to the next available meeting to keep working on the project before they bring it to you.
Look for a motion to defer?
Motion to defer item number two to the next available meeting.
So a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, motion carries. Excellent. Is there any written communication, any other written communication from the public, I guess?
All the communications that were received by the deadline were included as part of your packet.
Okay. Any written communication from staff, planning commissioners, or other commissioners?
None this evening.
Any written action of waiver or requests or determinations made by the city engineer?
Also none this evening.
And at this time, we will have disclosure of any ex parte communications regarding the items on tonight's agenda. Okay. Declaration of abstentions from any specific agenda item tonight? Alright. And we'll move into general public comment. This is the point where we will take public comment from anyone wanting to discuss issues that are not on the agenda tonight. So if you'd like to make public comment on something that we are not taking up this evening, please come up to the podium, or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand.
Marcy Francisco, 1101 Ohio. I do know that you're looking at a text amendment, and I had one other change within that same section that I thought would be appropriate because the idea was to be consistent with the statute. And to do that, you would have to say owners, not owner, in seven, two, whatever. So I don't know if that would be appropriate to say during the discussion of the text amendment, or if that's considered outside.
It seems like that would be something that we'll take up when we take up the text amendment, because it sounds like it's something you would want us to motion with that if we were to approve it.
Excellent.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Alright, we'll move into our first item then, which is an item request for rezoning. I believe Avery will be presenting the staff report for us this evening.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Avery Kerner, and I'm a planner with the planning office. And as the Chair mentioned, this next item before you is actually two rezoning applications for 2000 Bluffs Drive. And these applications are requesting to rezone the property from the R3 medium-density residential district and the M2 mixed-large neighborhood district to the R4 high-density residential district. The subject property is currently split zoned, so there are two separate, again, two separate rezoning applications before the planning commission, which will require two separate actions and votes. Z-25-0010 is the application for the eastern portion of the property, and that includes the detached parcel to the south of Bluffs Drive. And this application is requesting to rezone approximately 2.86 acres from the R3 district to the R4 district. And then Z-25-0011 is the application for the western portion of the property. And this application is requesting to rezone approximately 3.96 acres from the M2 district to the R4 district. The subject property is located northeast of the intersection of West 6th Street and McDonald Drive. In total, the property is approximately 6.8 acres in size. And again, this includes the detached parcel to the south of Bluffs Drive. This property is already developed with an office building and surface parking. And then, something of note would be that the planning commission saw a separate rezoning application come through earlier this year for the eastern portion of the property. That's shaded in pink on screen. That request was to rezone the property from the M2 district to the R3 district to facilitate plans for a medium-density housing project. The planning commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of that request. And then the city commission ultimately approved the request and adopted the rezoning ordinance, which rezoned that area to the R3 district that it is today. So this is a zoning map of the existing districts at and surrounding the subject property. To the north, there is an R1 residential low-density 1 district. To the east and south, there's existing R4 residential high-density districts and an M3 mixed corridor district. And then the M3 district also extends along the south side of the property out to the west of the subject property. This shows the existing land uses and at and surrounding the subject property. The subject property is mostly shaded in red for commercial use, with the exception of that detached parcel on the south side of Bluffs Drive, which is shaded gray to indicate that it's undeveloped and vacant. There are more commercial uses shaded in red to the east and southeast of the property. To the north, there are residential detached dwellings shaded in yellow. And then the areas that are shaded in this light brown color are indicating multi-dwelling residential uses. And then across the McDonald's Drive right-of-way to the west is more multi-dwelling residential use. And then in blue, that indicates an institutional use for a childcare learning center. And then up in that northwest corner is shaded light green for an open space parks use for the Alvamar golf course. The subject property is also in the Pinckney Neighborhood Association, which is shown in the area that's shaded and outlined in green to the north of West 6th Street. And then a small portion of the property is within the area of the HOP district plan. The boundary of that plan crosses the east edge of that detached parcel on the south side of Bluffs Drive. You can see that that black line crossing the eastern edge of the property. And the area subject to that adopted plan extends to the east of the subject property and to the southeast. So here I've listed a few, or several key points for these applications. Again, the property is split zoned, with the M2 district being on the western portion of the property and R3 district on the eastern portion of the property. The eastern 2.86 acres was rezoned from M2 to R3 on June 3 of 2025. And so this portion of the property has only been zoned R3 for a short period of time, and before that, it was zoned M2. The property is located in Tier 1 of the urban growth area, and it's in the area of the HOP district plan. And then rezoning to the R4 district would facilitate development of high-density residential uses. But these rezoning requests are not yet accompanied by a formal development proposal for the site. These rezoning requests are really the first step in the development process, and any future development or redevelopment of the site for a high-density residential use will require additional plating action, site plan review, and building permits prior to construction. So this is the list of review criteria, also known as the golden factors, that are used to review rezoning requests. Staff's review and analysis of these criteria are discussed in the staff report, and I'll walk through what the finding for each of those are from staff's review. The first criteria looks at whether the district conforms to the comprehensive plan. Staff reviewed the existing and proposed districts against the goals and objectives of Plan 2040. And staff's finding is that the proposed R4 district does align with Chapters 3 and 4 of the comp plan, which address growth and development in neighborhoods and housing. For criteria 2, staff's finding is that the proposed R4 district would be compatible with the zoning and land uses that surround the property. Again, this is the zoning map of the subject property and the surrounding neighboring properties. And you can see that there is an existing R4 district that abuts the northeast corner of the subject property. So approval of the rezoning request tonight would expand upon that existing R4 district and continue it along the south edge of the R1 zone neighborhood to the north. So continuing down the list, the next criteria is consideration of the character of the area. And the proposed R4 district would facilitate the development of high-density residential uses, which are already present in the area to the northeast and to the south of the subject property. So staff's finding is that this, this request, or these requests would fit within the character of the area. For criteria 4, the property is in the area of the HOP district plan. That plan does have, or does not have, a future land use map, so there isn't a specific land use recommendation for the property. Instead, the plan recommends for the property, or encourages, compatible redevelopment and uses, or recommends using transitional uses and zonings between low-density and higher-intensity uses to help preserve the residential use and character that exists along the edges of the HOP district plan area. The proposed R4 district is identified as being an appropriate district for use as a transition between residential neighborhoods and more intense commercial development. So staff's finding is that the requests do conform to the adopted area plan. Criteria 5 is a consideration of the property's suitability for the uses that it's restricted to under the current zoning. The R3 district allows for medium-density housing, as well as small-to-medium and non-residential uses within medium-scale structures. So staff's finding is that the property is suitable for the uses currently permitted on-site, given its size and location. Criteria 6 looks at how long the property has been vacant as zoned. And this property is not vacant of development, since the site is already developed with an office building and parking, but the building is currently unoccupied. The property was developed in the mid-1980s and has had different tenants over the years, but staff was unable to determine a clear timeline of occupancy, so it's unclear exactly when the site was last occupied. Staff's best guess is that the property has been unoccupied for, between three and five years, based on aerial images of the site, which show a sharp decrease in the number of vehicles parked on-site between 2020 and 2022. Of course, this time period is also when the COVID-19 pandemic began, so it's possible that employees just moved to remote work and the site became unoccupied, or truly unoccupied, at a later date after that time period. But again, with the records available to staff, our best estimate is that the site has been unoccupied for somewhere up to five years. For criteria 7, staff does not anticipate the rezoning to have any detrimental effect on neighboring properties. In terms of land use intensity, the R4 district would be comparable to the existing M2 district on the western portion of the site. The proposed R4 district would technically allow for an increase in intensity for the eastern portion of the property, zoned R3, if it's approved. But since this portion of the property has only been zoned R3 for a short period of time, and there hasn't been any change in use or development on-site since the R3 district was established, this increase is unlikely to be noticeable. And then for criteria 8, staff does not anticipate denial of the request to directly benefit public health, safety, or welfare. The last criteria is staff's professional recommendation, and that recommendation is to forward both requests to the city commission with recommendations for approval, based on the findings presented in the staff report. And then, again, as a reminder, these are two separate rezoning applications and requests that will require separate actions and votes. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you Avery. Would anyone like to ask, have questions of staff now, or can we turn to the applicant presentation? Well, if we have questions for you later, Avery will ask you. I appreciate the detective work that you did. Figured out a lot. Would the applicant like to present?
Avery's a little shorter than I am. Good evening. My name is Lance Adams. I'm with Adams Architects. And so tonight, we're looking at the rezoning of these two pieces of property, one from an R3 to an R4, the other from M2 to an R4. I want to see if I can, can you help me out? Here you go. He's got it for me. So, we went through, we saw there was, there was a comment from the public about concern about cross-access onto 5th Street and some other items. So although this is schematic, we did want to kind of give everybody kind of a view and a feel for what we're looking at for the site. For this site, it's actually very exciting for an architect to be able to reuse a developed site. And if anybody has taken the chance to drive through the site, you would know why it's called the Bluffs. There are multiple retaining walls and, and parking areas that are staggered all the way up and down it. So as we looked at this, we looked at how do we use these spaces effectively without adjusting or shifting really kind of how the site has already been laid out with retaining walls. So we took advantage of when we could and when we couldn't on some existing parking areas. And then we also took advantage of where the, the existing buildings at, that I believe you said was built in 1980 something, where that's at as well. So for what we're proposing, there's very little actual pervious surface that we're actually using. We're mainly trying to focus on impervious surfaces, hard surfaces, to put these new buildings into it. Also, most, well, we are actually over on what would be required for parking just by the parking that we're leaving for the project. So there's a lot of pluses in this design and concept that we're, we're working on. The, the main factor is that all of the access points for this are controlled by Bluffs Drive and, and not through the other neighborhoods. So it's also isolated on itself on any additional circulation, where it feeds out then to, to main streets, and we are not impacting any of the neighborhood circulation that exists today. So with that, we did look at that great little lot that's kind of isolated, that's shown as undeveloped. And as you can see, we've developed a, that's really kind of our clubhouse area to be more of a focal point for this area as you drive up and down 6th Street to look at. And let me see if I can share that one. So what, and this is just kind of conceptual, I wanted to give you guys kind of a flavor for what we're looking at. It's a traditional clubhouse with a workout area. It does have a pool, has storage, and we're calling it right now hardened room for any of people that are living in the area to have that area to go in case there's a weather event. Upstairs, once again, kind of a traditional clubhouse area with a deck that overlooks everything. We're really taking advantage of, once again, the, the bluffs there. So if you drive by, you'll see that that site is terraced. And so we've done the same terracing with our building and the pool and all that to really make a great view for that. And I just want to kind of show you a little bit on, again, this is kind of, you know, schematic, conceptual for what we're looking at for the area. But you can kind of see how the clubhouse is really setting lightly on what is occurring there in the area. We're really trying to embrace kind of what, what is the bluffs and how to work with it. So we're not looking at, once again, even all the way back to the apartments where we're going on to the parking lots and where that existing building is. We're really trying to embrace how the site is already shaped, so we have this least impact on any type of pervious surface that exists. And so we're actually, I think through the calculations, we're actually increasing the pervious surface of the sites for what we're doing. So that's really kind of in a, in a quick look at what we're looking at doing and what that, what our site plan looks like on this. So the previous concept that you saw, this was all under, you know, one ownership at, at that time, and it became very apparent that Lawrence has a lot of empty office space. And that's probably pretty true for a lot of, you know, towns and cities throughout America after COVID, because as you had pointed out, people went home. People went home and they've stayed home. And so the desire for a very large office building, doesn't really exist any longer, because everybody has pushed to smaller offices or working-from-home environments. So that building had really, they quickly determined that it was just not feasible for both work required, which I think the city's well aware of the work required on that building to make it usable for that. So that's why we've looked at, how do we still use that space and what is there that's excellent for this project to go into that area? So if there's any questions, we'll happen to answer them.
Great, thanks. We'll go to public comment, and then we'll allow you to have a response. And then if anybody has any questions, when we bring it back to discussion, they'll ask you. So this one, we'll see, public comment on this item. Is there anyone here from the public to speak on this item this evening? If so, please come up to the podium. And online, please raise your hand. It looks like we have a couple of people online.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Schaefer. I'm at 1930 West 5th. I wrote a letter, which you all should have in your packet, so I'm not going to go over that again. I do want to make sure you are all aware that there is a covenant attached to the Sally Mae/Bluffs property that does prohibit road access onto either 5th Street or Iowa, the little country road that goes downhill. And it also requires that the owners of the property maintain some sort of green screen between the site and the neighbors to the north. Also, I wanted to bring up the point that on the land use map, I think it's figure 2 in your packet, there is a parcel that fronts 5th Street, and it is zoned R1 and had been owned by the Bluffs folks up until a few days ago, which it was then sold, or not sold, but it's up for sale. It was sold to two other groups, sorry. And so when this does eventually get sold, it will therefore allow access onto 5th Street. And no more green border. So, I don't know. Avery, do you need to show the figure 2, or they can see it? I just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? Alright.
Marcy Francisco, 1101 Ohio. I have been informed that I, in my duties, I think as mayor, from 1981 to 1983, did sign that covenant.
And I believe we have someone online, is that right? Yes, Brandy Sutton.
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer, for bringing that to everybody's attention. And I'm sure Marcy still has And I'm sure Marcy still has a headache from the litigation that went on from that. The lot that is on Fifth Street was transferred with the intent to remain R1, that it did actually be redeveloped, that it did actually be redeveloped, wasn't a possibility of seaching or repurposing the building.
Thank you. Are you still, have we lost you entirely or are you done with your public comment?
No, no, I was finished. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just didn't want to cut you off. Okay. 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 Is there any more public comments? All right. Does the applicant like to respond to any of the public comment that was made?
The lot in question, that R1 lot, it was separated off from the original owners. The original owners of this overall development has changed and that lot was separated off to go with the owner that is not developing this lot now. But the purpose of that was to maintain an R1 up against Fifth Street. So that's why we excluded it from our request and so we could focus on just our R4 and maintain that buffer. So for what, the areas we're asking, once again, we are not, per the site plan, you can tell, we are not looking to add any traffic onto any other streets, just maintaining the Bluffs Drive and utilizing it, which is a great all-concrete street with curbs on both sides. It's great infrastructure that's there for us. So there's no need to manipulate or change any other streets in there. So once again, we are really focused on using what the site already has for us to develop this. So, is there any other questions?
We'll come back for discussion and if we have questions, we'll ask some of you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right. So with that, we will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Looks like Commissioner DeVore would like to get started.
Yeah, the public comment, there was a question about a green screen needing to be maintained. Avery, is that part of the, I mean, we're in the zoning phase, that's not something we would ask for at this point, correct? I mean, that's...
Right. I think what the public, written public comment was referring to was the requirement that's within the recorded covenants and restrictions for the property. Typically, that as a site, element of site design isn't reviewed at the rezoning phase. That would be reviewed as part of a site plan application, which would be an administrative review.
Thank you.
Other, yes?
Two questions around the covenant that was mentioned. One is, is it, I assume it's still in force and effect? And to just clearly ask maybe of Lance, are you aware of the details of the covenant and is what you're asking for, what you're intending, at this stage anyway, compliant with?
So honestly, it's the first that I've heard of it and I think staff wasn't aware of it. It wasn't in the staff report either that this covenant existed. Obviously, Marcy's well aware of it. I think though, if we looked again, if you could bring back up my site plan that we showed...
It may not even be the right time to deal with it.
Well, and it's, no, I want to make sure that everybody's kind of looking at this. So you can see our property line here and that's, well, our property line for this is right around the edge here. There is all of this city-owned property that is fully treed and covered. So that is your screen and you can see it exists all through here as well, existing trees. This is all outside of what we can touch and do. So your existing green screen is in place and it is out of play for us on the site at all because it already exists and it's on city property.
It's not a function of the zoning request anymore.
Right.
Correct. So, but just so you understand...
You can ask about it, we just can't consider it.
It's all in there and exists as it is.
Thank you, Lance.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion of the commission?
Question for staff, just to confirm, know the answer, but for the benefit of the public and everybody else who might be interested. This R1 parcel adjoining the subject properties, to the extent that that's ever proposed to be rezoned in the future, that is something that would come through planning commission separately, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Question for Lance and also to inform the public really. What is, what kind of housing are you, if you have thought about it already, what is, just, you know, can you talk briefly about what it's going to look like?
Sure. So that was a little bit of the flavor. You saw the clubhouse. It's kind of a modern style for what's going on with this. It's a mixture of ones, twos, and threes on bedrooms for the area, mainly focused on twos, but we do have ones and threes mixed in there as well. So that's kind of the direction that we're looking at for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
And that is, does Bluffs Drive serve as two access points to this development?
Yes, so the Bluffs Drive does connect on two points, one down at McDonald Drive and then the other one is up onto Iowa Street.
So it meets the test of having two access...
Sixth Street, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, you're good.
Sixth Street, almost Iowa. Yes, it has its two access points and should meet all the fire department requirements as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have a question for staff. And that is, the new land development code has really tried to push the M2 districts. And would you explain to me why we're losing an M2 district in favor of the more intense family housing here?
So the, there are, the new land development code has three mixed-use districts established. That's M1, M2, and M3. This property is, or the western portion of the property is currently zoned M2, which is sort of that middle mixed-use district. The land development code identifies the use intensity of that to be comparable to what the R4 is. So it's not necessarily that rezoning to the proposed R4 district would allow for more intense land use on the property. It's more of a lateral shift from that mixed-use high-intensity to the high-intensity residential. And the, again, with the proposed R4 district, it conforms to the comprehensive plan and meets several of those other review criteria, which is why staff is recommending approval.
But we're, aren't we losing the opportunity to have some commercial mix in there?
So as mentioned in the staff report, the existing M2 district on the western portion of the property may be more effective in sort of meeting some of Plan 2040's goals and objectives related to mixed-use development. However, as also addressed in the staff report, single-use development is still possible on the property as it's currently zoned. And there are a couple residential use types that would not have a development requirement or a requirement to develop a portion of this project as non-residential. The property could also, or the western portion of the property could also be zoned strictly for a non-residential use. So maintaining the M2 district for that western portion of the property doesn't necessarily guarantee that mixed-use development would take place on site. There's just an additional standard that could, could require it if a developer were proposing a multi-unit dwelling development, multi-dwelling units as part of the development.
So could, could the residential of the R4 be built in the M2 without changing the M2?
Multi-dwelling units could be, multi-dwelling units could be developed in the M2 district. There would be a requirement to construct those as part of a mixed-use project where at least 25% of the gross floor area is used or dedicated to non-residential uses. But again, the multi-dwelling unit use is not the only residential use that's permitted in the M2 district. Let me pull up the staff report. I believe detached dwellings and, I don't know what the other, others are just off the top of my head and I'm not getting to them quick enough, but those uses don't necessarily trigger that requirement to have non-residential gross floor area as part of a project.
Thank you. And yes, may I have Lance come back, please?
Thank you. Speaking about the site architecturally, as you look at it as an M2, what's your main driver for commercial use is going to be signage and visibility. What we, what got set forward in '83 was a green screen around the site, right? Who drives by there now and goes, oh yeah, there's a massive two-and-a-half-story building, but nobody, right? And at the time that was developed, that was fine because it was built for Sally Mae. It was really a call center. Call centers just don't exist now. That is not something that we bring that many people into one area to do that. And once again, it's that office settings in a large format that is just not occurring. So a lot of these sites that are not visible or that can't have a, you know, a 20-foot-tall pole sign saying, you know, Red Roof Inn is under, is over here, those things, they're just not going to go into those visibility spots. So architecturally, or as a developer, when they look at those spots, it's, is my project visible or not? Because a lot of those commercial items really are relying on people driving by and going, oh yeah, I need to stop by and grab a stapler, I need to, whatever it is, right? And if you're not visible and you can't have the signage poking up above the green screen, it's just not a feasible item anymore. So you're really looking for, it would have to be some sort of large destination place that people have pre-planned in their head. I am going to this spot today at this time to do this thing and not as a drive-by as you see on like Sixth Street.
So you wouldn't see commercial uses that would serve the increased amount of residential density?
I think that the, those items already exist. I think that's what Sixth Street corridor already is. I think we're providing more customers for those existing commercial and retail spaces up and down Sixth Street. So I think we're placing it in the right area and the right location. And I think if you really look at what Avery had shown you on the different zoning, this is truly how, as we've talked about this in the past, how the city of Lawrence has developed, where we have some commercial or M zoning and we have an R4 zoning behind that and then behind that is an R1 or a single-family residence. So I think we are just completing that pattern that already exists and we are providing a lot of additional people for all that commercial right there up and down Sixth Street. So it's a great location. I think you're going to have a lot of commercial clients very happy with this additional people in the area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question about the east side. The, the R3 to the R4 part, and especially maybe that little spot down there. And I should probably know this, but I don't, Avery. So are we increasing the minimum density when we're looking at the R3 to the R4? Someone else might know that here as well. I'm just curious as, because we don't have a concept necessarily in front of us. So I'm just trying to think, when we make this change from R3 to R4, we're allowing more density and intense use, but are we actually in essence also requiring more density or more intense use there?
Yes, the R3 district has a minimum density requirement of seven units per acre and a maximum of 15, while the R4 district that's proposed has a minimum density of dwelling units per acre, which is 16, and then a maximum of 32 dwelling units per acre.
And then on that smaller chunk on the east side to the south, I guess, I don't know how many acres that is or what that looks like. And it looked like maybe there was, obviously, it's just not even really a real concept yet, right? The concept plan had like a clubhouse there. How does that fit into a requirement for density, especially like with the 11? How would that work with that lower portion there?
So how would that add?
Yeah, is it just, I guess ultimately it would just be the project overall would need to have that and so that lower portion, the acreage of that lower portion would just fit into the whole project and then the net density or the minimum would be calculated based off on that. So it wouldn't be like you'd have to have the minimum in just that chunk right there, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. I'm not sure that I have a exact answer. Typically, I mean, we would look at the whole development site in the parcel and it typically, that would be all one, one parcel or one property. This one's a little bit unique because it has that detached parcel. So I think that would maybe be something that we would need to discuss with staff a little bit further to come up to a determination, or maybe Jeff can step in and provide his input.
Usually when you look at something like that, you're looking for the project site as a whole. So this one's got a little bit of an interesting bifurcation in the way that Bluffs Drive kind of comes through there, but essentially what you'd have is the project spanning on either side of the road. And so what you look at is the balance across the project as a whole. Most of your bigger sites will have, or sorry, bigger apartments will have an office or a pool or an amenities space and that would just have to get attributed in, that it wouldn't be a dwelling unit necessarily, but some feature there and then just work that out through the density in the site itself.
Okay. Okay. Yes. Does that mean that net density is being calculated by project size rather than parcel size?
It can be in some instances in the case of this one where the parcel ends up getting split by that road because you effectively have it under one control group. You'd have it, you know, if you're buying it, you're buying both the south and the north in that configuration, I would suspect. Now, if they were splitting it away or doing it in a different way, then we'd look at what was available in the project as a whole there. But really can't calculate density beyond a project's boundary necessarily because you can't really, you know, compel them to do density on somebody else's parcel or redevelop something else. So it's really in that scope of the project itself.
But not necessarily limit to the parcel?
Correct. Because there might be multiple parcels in play or it might be something else, like you saw with the plat about a month or two ago, where it would end up being replatted into multiple parcels and the project density was spread around that entire plat area. And I want to say it was two tracks and I'm going to say 14 lots, and I think I'm wrong in that respect, but it was some number of teens lots and then those two tracks and that density was spread along all of those in that capacity.
Thank you. Other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion? Yes?
All right. I move that we approve the request to rezone Z250010, approximately 2.86 acres located at 2,000 Bluffs Drive from R3 to R4 district based on the findings presented in the staff report and forward the request to the city commission with a recommendation for approval.
Is there a second? Any discussion, any further discussion on, or discussion on this motion?
Just a general note that I thought staff did a fine job of running through the factors and how those apply in this particular instance and that's what I'm basing my decision off of, so I appreciate that.
All in favor of the motion? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes. Thank you. And with that, we will entertain, or I will look for, a second motion regarding this property.
Can you do it again?
Sure.
Move that we approve the request to rezone Z25-0011 approximately 3.96 acres located at 2,000 Bluff Drive from M2 to R4, based on the findings presented in the staff report, and forward the request to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval.
Is there a second? Any further discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Avery. And with that, we will move on to the, what's marked as the third item on our agenda this evening, which is to consider a text amendment to the New Land Development Code. And I believe that Catherine will be our presenter on this issue.
And I'm actually going to present from here tonight, because this one's a little bit different, so we don't really have any visuals for you this evening. So this is a text amendment that's being brought before you for consideration. This is an applicant-initiated text amendment, and it was initiated by-
I'm sorry, I'll have to ask you to, yeah, to keep conversation or take it outside, just so we can hear Catherine, sorry.
So it was initiated by the City Commission on June 3rd as part of their consent agenda. There was no discussion or anything on that. But the text amendment was brought about, and I believe the applicant included some, a recent case in their application for you, which was also added to the packet, which had a lot of references for the definition for unnecessary hardship and some case law statutes that were cited in that document. Their request initially was to eliminate the definition of unnecessary hardship altogether. With discussions between city legal and the applicant and staff, they've modified their request to amend the definition of unnecessary hardship, to kind of tweak that language to be more consistent with Kansas case law. The gist of it is in our current definition, and I've listed both of those in the staff report. In our current definition, it does reference a more strict definition, which uses use in the definition, and in Kansas, use variances are prohibited. So referencing uses is not consistent with Kansas case law and how decisions have been made on how that unnecessary hardship criteria should be applied to area variances, which is what the Board of Zoning Appeals has purview over. So we are proposing to, and staff is in support of this, to change that definition, and I think the applicant can probably speak more to it if you have some specific questions on how this came about. But we are proposing to kind of recraft that definition to remove the references to use and to continue to have a consistent basis for what unnecessary hardship is, when both staff and the Board of Zoning Appeals are reviewing that criteria point that's consistent for all property owners, but still removes that reference to the use of a property. Because the area variances should be, I mean, if the use is permitted in the zoning district, they should be able to do that use on the site. And so the area variance should only relate to those dimensional standards related to, it shouldn't reference other uses that are available or any use on the site. It should just reference, if the use is permitted, what are the parameters and the regulations for the dimensional standards for that use. That kind of gives you the gist of it, and I'm happy to answer any questions. If they delve into the legal aspect, though, I may ask for somebody to, you know, back me up here.
I believe Randy's on. He's got your back. All right, is the applicant likely to present?
Be happy to just give you some context, commissioners. My name's Patrick Watkins. I am a land use attorney in town. I'm one of the few people that gets to appear before the BZA, and this kind of goes back a few years. I appeared on behalf of Brad Ziegler to get a variance for Charlie's East Side. And the BZA granted the variance, but there was a lawsuit filed contesting it. Marcy's here, and she was part of the development, or the neighboring group that filed the lawsuit. Ultimately, the result of that was a judgment from the district court that noted that we have an unnaturally high standard for granting variances. And to be very brief about it and maybe elaborate on what Catherine has said, there's two different types of variances that have been considered. There's use variances, which are pretty unique, and it's a variance on the type of use you could have on a property. A lot of Kansas early case law is based upon use variances because you don't want a smeltering plant next to a residence. There's area variances, parking standards, setbacks, minimum lot sizes, two different types. Well, Kansas outlawed, or gave cities the ability to outlaw use variances, and most cities have, and Lawrence has. We are still allowed to have area variances, and the BZA is tasked with granting those. But for reasons I don't fully understand, and I don't know that we have the history on it, we adopted the standards from use variances. And so the district court pointed that out, and they said, "It's kind of irrelevant to this case. We're going to uphold the BZA's variance, but you should know it's a high standard." So that's where this comes from. We saw it in the case, and I brought it to the attention of the folks doing the Land Development Code rewrite. I brought it to the attention of the legal department and the planning director, and I kind of pleaded with folks, like, "This is the time to put it in there." It didn't get done at that time. So I went ahead and filed a text amendment for this. It's good policy. You know, Lawrence gets credit for being a really thorough, or having a very thorough planning department. And I think some people would be very critical and say it's more than thorough, it's very challenging. Variances are what give some flexibility to the code. They should be more routinely granted. They should not have a high, unnaturally high illegal standard. They should be consistent with other places. I looked at Olathe, Overland Park, Yandotte County, they don't have a definition for unnecessary hardship. And so that was what the request is, but I'm okay with the definition that the staff came up with. It's something that they can point at when they're training BZA members. I am now a BZA board member, I'm not here in that capacity, but this is good policy. Makes it easier on staff, I think. Makes it easier on the BZA. It makes it better for developers, home builders, homeowners. So I think it's good policy. I'm glad that the staff supports it. So that's sort of the context and the background here. I don't wish to be the applicant necessarily trying to change the code, because it looks like I'm self-interested, but I think this ought to be something that we correct. It's an easy one. Those are my comments.
Thanks, Pat. Are there any members of the public to speak to this this evening?
My name is Dean Paylos. I'm, I live at 727 Tennessee Street. I've lived in Lawrence for 45 years. My first job in Lawrence was, I spent eight years here as a city planner, and was heavily involved in downtown planning and lots of other things, and learned a lot, worked with the BZA here. The past, after that, I spent 20, excuse me, I spent 28 years with Johnson County. The last 14 years of that, I was the county planning director, and that's for the unincorporated. Each of the cities have their own zoning and planning departments. So what I'm trying to say is I've had a lot of familiarity, pardon me, I've got a cold. I've had a lot of familiarity with Boards of Zoning Appeals. I am now on the Lawrence BZA. I've been on for three years, and I just got reappointed, so I must be doing okay.
Congratulations, I think.
Thank you. It's a labor of love, like you all know, right? Well, anyway, I've been troubled by this ever since I got on the BZA, because I think the standard that is established by state statutes that defines the need or the condition for unnecessary hardship is sufficient. I don't know of any other city in Kansas. I know Johnson County didn't have that kind of definition, didn't have any other definition than the standard itself. None of the other conditions have any kind of definition along with them either in the city's regulations. So I question the need for it. I think, as Patrick stated, it sets an awfully high bar. I think the language as it is is sufficiently clear, and I'm opposed, I'm sorry to say this, I'm opposed to the language that's been proposed by my colleague. I think the last sentence is particularly difficult, and I'll just read it to you and ask you to think about it. It says, "The claimed hardship must involve more than mere inconvenience." What does that mean? And that's, that's language that's carried over from what's currently in the city's definition. "A preference for a more lenient standard." Well, that's why they're there. That's why they come. And then the question of financial loss or financial advantage. There's not a zoning request, BZA request, that doesn't involve finance. So I don't see why those need to be included in the proposed definition. My preference is to eliminate the definition as it exists, not to adopt the one that's been proposed, or maybe as a minimum, scratch that last sentence, but that's it. And I'm kind of impassioned about this, because now that I've been on the BZA, I see how hard it is for people to make that decision.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
All right.
Marcy?
Marcy Francisco, 1101 Ohio. And I'm pleased that the court case filed by Penn Street Line may have been helpful in providing some information for this text amendment. I have no objections to the changes in the definition of unnecessary hardship, and appreciate the work that the staff did in that. But although I didn't ever take freshman English, I'm not sure you should have an A without a B or other things. So I'll just point that out. And I also wanted to note that in this section, I read the page because it was included, there also is in number two, a statement that granting the variance would not adversely affect the right of adjacent property owner or residence. And so I did bring my copy of the statutes, and it is indeed owners, plural. I don't know if that's possible to add at this point, if you suggest it, but if the idea is to make it consistent with the law, that would also do that. Because the text of a court decision was included in the agenda packet, I want to provide you a copy of the minutes that were adopted by the Board of Zoning Appeals almost a year after the meeting, if I may. So please note, the first motion was to deny the parking variance request based upon the findings in the staff report concluding that the request does not meet the five conditions outlined in Section 201309-G1 of the Land Development Code. And the second motion that passed was to approve the parking variance request based upon the finding that the request does meet the five conditions outlined in that same section. The section, or the second motion, was not the same as the one that's recorded on the YouTube video. So Penn Street Line filed an appeal, but subsequently withdrew that appeal because the parking variance that was granted has expired. I would also note that the newly adopted Land Development Code requires commercial uses to provide parking spaces if they are within residential zoning districts. But I'm not sure that that's what the Planning Commission intended. I think you were talking about commercial uses adjacent to residential districts. So that's one other area in the Land Development Code that you might take a look at. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marcy. Is there anyone else here tonight to talk about this? Anyone online? No, I'm not seeing anyone online. Great, thank you. With that, I will, does the applicant have a response?
There was a lot of, I'm not sure what the minutes have to do with this, to be honest. There was all sorts of things that went into that appeal. It took years. It certainly frustrated the development. Ultimately, it was dismissed. But it's not really what we're talking about today. We're talking about the judge's ruling correcting the code. So I think Marcy wants to, you know, probably defend her position, but she sounds like she's in support of this. So happy to respond to any questions and clarify anything, but not sure exactly what the minutes say or why they're relevant today.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back to the commission, and I can see Commissioner March has a question.
Just want to jump right in.
Yes.
I'm trying to get my bearings here, so I guess, to start, a question for staff. In the Development Code, there are a number of instances of the use of the term unnecessary hardship. Some of those are lowercase, some of those are uppercase. Uppercase suggests that it's intended to be the defined term. The only place that I see within the code where unnecessary hardship is defined is in a table in the subdivision regulations, perhaps? And so my question is, I see in the amendment only an excerpt from this Article 16. Is what we're considering here tonight only a clarifying amendment or a change with respect to that particular section of Article 16, or are we hitting every aspect of the usage of unnecessary hardship throughout the code?
No, tonight presented before you is only addressing the BZA's role in Article 16 where it would apply. There is a definition in the subdivision regulations. The definition for unnecessary hardship used to be at the end of the Development Code with the general definitions as well. Somehow that did not get carried over into, which maybe should have been corrected with the typos and corrections text amendment that you saw. So for tonight, it is only proposed to change and amend Article 16 in reference to the role for the BZA.
Very good.
The subdivision regulations would only apply in the subdivision variance categories.
Yes, okay. That's, that's helpful, so I appreciate that. So I guess a follow-up, potentially two, where we might get a little more technical here. I note that in the existing subsection 3 here, Romanet 3, we use the capitalized unnecessary hardship, but then in the new language that we're adding in, we're using lowercase unnecessary hardship. Is that purposeful, or should those be aligned?
I don't know that it needs to be capitalized, because it's now being inserted into the text, the context text itself. Usually capitalized refers to a definition later in a code, and I may need to look at it again to see exactly where the capitalizing was and wasn't, because I don't have that right in front of me, so let me take a look real quick here.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. I might be able to add some clarity to that situation. In the past, the city code would capitalize words that were defined, so that you could refer back to them. We went to the Munich Code system a year, year and a half ago or so, and they went away from that. So they uncapitalized everything. So we're in a little bit of flux right now. So we would try to correct that to make it consistent.
Got it. So in light of that, I might suggest two edits to what is being proposed in front of us. One, that we don't capitalize unnecessary hardship in that subsection 3. And then two, with the new language, this subsection A, if that holds. Can we clarify that it's for the purposes of this Section 7A3, unnecessary hardship exists?
I don't know if we need to clarify. That might be a question for Randy, because it is only in that section, it only applies to that section.
Yes. So I understand that that's how it would be interpreted if we were to sit down and say, "Okay, what did these guys mean?" I'm thinking maybe in the interest of people trying to make sense of the code, would it be helpful if they're, like me, and they're doing a search for where does unnecessary hardship pop up? For a layperson, would it be helpful to just clarify that we're just, in this instance, we're just talking about how this term is used in this particular section?
I think I would ask that of Randy, to see if he's good with that clarification.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. That definitely can be added, if the Planning Commission so wanted it to be. That would not be a problem. I think the goal would be eventually to align unnecessary hardships throughout the code. We just didn't have the time, or at least when this was proposed, this was just going to apply to the BZA. I believe we would try to do something a little more globally involving the subdivision regulations, but to do that, we'd have to go to the county and the city at the same time, and that would take a little more effort. So this was just kind of a quick fix at this point in time, and then we'd come back and get to the other stuff. But that definitely could be added to it, and it would not, it would not detract from the provision at all.
I think that actually you raised something that I've been kind of concerned about, which I think we most certainly would kind of have to do that if we went down the road of incorporating this. But at this point, there is a definition of unnecessary hardship in the code, and if we were to insert a different definition of unnecessary hardship, there could most certainly be confusion because it is no longer in the definition section. So, and if you look at unnecessary hardship, it's used throughout the code in multiple places, and so, which because it's not in any definition term, which one of these two inconsistent ones then is, is it that we're talking about in other areas of the code? And so I think we definitely probably need to be having a conversation about how we define unnecessary hardship. I'm not sure a quick fix or a quick amendment is necessarily going to get us where we need to be because we also have, which I specifically remember raising when we were talking about the Land Development Code, the whole capitalization thing, right? And so now we've got this term all over, but we're not really quite sure, if you look at it, which one we're talking about, where is it defined when? So I would just throw that out as we're thinking about how a layperson would, would look at this, or how they would see it, where it's been proposed to be set out. So something to think about. Commissioner Eldridge?
I have a different topic that I'd like to ask about, but I don't want to interrupt the flow of this if somebody wants to talk a little bit more about the questions that Commissioners Munch and Hayden have raised.
I just want one, just a clarifying question. So is the change, just this addition, Section A under, under subdivision three, is that, or subsection three, is that basically the change that we're going to vote on?
Yes.
That part? That wasn't there in the prior code at all?
Correct.
We're not amending anything, we're adding something?
Well, we did change the language of the previous definition that the BZA used for unnecessary hardship.
Okay.
So this is a modified definition, but it is being inserted into that section.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eldridge?
Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry, before a change, yes.
Are you going to change the subject?
Yeah, that's why I don't want to do it.
Yeah, so I'd like to drink a little more before we go someplace else. I have, I have long struggled with the definition of unnecessary hardship, particularly the part that excludes any financial component to hardship. There's so many different ways that that might show up. The statement that was made a moment ago about striking that last sentence really resonates with me. And if we're going to crack this open and make a change, I'd love to see us maybe talk a little bit about what it might look like if we did strike that last sentence. Because as I read this, with that sentence gone, and unnecessary hardship exists, the property owner can demonstrate that the property owner is able to develop or use the property in a way that is proposed by and that is reasonably permitted by Chapter 20 of the city code as amended. Full stop. If they can't operate within the code, that is, that is an unnecessary, that is an unnecessary hardship, a hardship that wasn't intended, an unnecessary hardship. To further add this clarification, I just don't understand the reason that we would raise that, or I just don't get it. I don't know where that comes from.
It comes from case law. And the quote is, "Mere economic advantage or disadvantage to the landowner applying for the variance does not in itself constitute unnecessary hardship."
Right, Troy.
In multiple cases over the years.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. That last sentence is all taken from case law. That's specifically related to case law decisions, related to area variances as opposed to use variances, which was the problem with old language. That old language had been carried over back from prehistoric times when we did allow use variances. That went out years and years ago, but that definition of the variance just survived that, and it should have been changed, and it never was. So this is a correction to come into compliance with case law.
Okay, I'm confused now.
Yeah, so am I. So when I look into recent cases about area variances, they still are using the language that says a mere economic advantage or disadvantage is not.
That's correct. That's all from, that's all from area variances.
It's all from.
I'm talking about the previous definition that required you to be able to show that you could not use it for any other purpose. That existed in the definition up until now. We removed that because it does not apply to anything other than use variances, and the city does not admit use variances, and has not for years and years and years. That survives as a relic in the past, as a relic of use variances, which we don't have.
But the language you're talking about, the focusing on the financial stuff is from, oh, I don't know if it's in the statute, but it's in case law. It is in the case law.
It is. It's current, and it's related to area variances as opposed to use variances. So that last sentence is valid case law.
So every city in the, in the state of Kansas has this, has that sentence in their unnecessary hardship definition?
I do not know that, but.
I don't believe that they do, but that is what the case law would be. And if I sat in front of the BZA and asked them, well, what is unnecessary hardship? I would give them that sentence.
Okay.
So this would save a lot of time and effort for everybody.
I guess, I guess I'm still, I understand that it's in case law, but it's not, it's not statute. Does that mean that we cannot change this? We could not strike that?
So I would, I could defer to the lawyer, or I could just say what my, kind of little bit of my understanding is, is by having, because it's the actual law, my understanding is, it is the law. So if a case were to be, if somebody were to appeal and to take it to the district court, the standard would be that mere economic disadvantage or advantage isn't enough, it's not something we can consider. And so I think that the reason that we have, we have it specifically enumerated in our code is so that it's clear, and we're not going to all of the trouble and all of the expense and the money of a lawsuit for a court to say, yeah, this has been in our case law for years. I think that's why.
It makes sense based on what Randy was saying in terms of it would save a lot of time for BZA. If a case gets submitted to them, they can literally say, see?
That's not the point, though. My point is, my point is not making it easy for the city to say no. My point is, how can we improve what we're doing to the benefit of our community?
But if they said, if they said yes to it, and it goes to city, to the state, though, and the state goes, hey, Lawrence, you forgot about this case law.
Or we made a potential decision to do.
That, to me, is the difference, you know?
I don't remember the name of.
Dean Palos.
Dean Palos. I was prompted, and I remember. May I ask him a question?
You may.
So you two guys are on the.
On the BZA.
BZA.
Yes.
Together, and.
We're not rep.
But your statement.
Yeah, we're not representing the BZA.
No, no.
Okay.
Heaven forbid. But as you see it, the issues that come before you on the city BZA almost always or always have some monetary.
Yes.
Impact.
It's hard to ima, I can't think of one that doesn't. It's hard to imagine somebody coming in without having, as you said, there's so many layers of finance involved. I mean, people come in and that's what, they want to do something, and it usually involves adding something which is going to cost them some money.
And yet Randy is saying, or we are saying, on that last sentence that is here, you cannot consider that at all. And I would agree with Gary. Are we here to represent the citizens and take care of them, or is this just a legal matter and we say, that's it, doesn't matter, guys? We can just point at that last sentence and say, I probably can't use those words. It just seems that, that does not sit well with me.
Nor me. May I make a comment?
I'm sorry, only if you're asked a question.
Okay.
I would like to ask you, what were you going to say?
That's not really the right question, Charlie, you but.
What I was saying.
Well, I don't know how familiar all of you are with the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's a separate, your role is quasi-judicial. Their role is actually judicial. They have, they perform like a court. The state statutes set those five conditions. They didn't go in any further explanation of them, they just set those five conditions that the city has adopted. What the city has done, I don't know when they did it, I wasn't here when they did it, but they added that definition. And I understand why they added that definition, because it's, it's difficult to decide what is a hardship and what isn't. But the most important point for me is, is that the state established those regulatory language, I don't know how many years ago, at least 40 years ago, if not longer, I've been here that long, so. And there's, they're all, all five of them are difficult. They all, they all involve some sort of judgment, some sort of subjective, objective as you can get. And that's what this regulation is trying to do, is it's trying to objectify something that I think is inherently subjective.
Thank you.
We added that last sentence, not the state.
Yeah.
Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, and you can ask an attorney about.
Yes, Charlie, you need to address that question to staff.
Oh. Did we add that last, we of this county add that last, City of Lawrence had that last sentence?
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. That language existed in the old definition. We carried it over because it has been carried over to area variances. It is an accurate statement of the law, and whenever we have a case before the BZA where someone is seeking a variance, and they are required to do something, and they don't want to do it, they don't want to do it because it costs too much money. Under state law, the economic hardship is not enough by itself. It has to be some other type of hardship that does not allow them to come into compliance with the code. That's state law, that's common law, that's applied, and that's what that sentence is for.
Commissioner Eldridge, I think you were going to, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a series of questions. I understand under our existing code that text amendments can be made by the Planning Commission, by the City Commission, or by a private person. If they're made by a private person, they need to submit an application as to why the text amendment is a good thing, and it goes before the City Commission. The City Commission approves it. That's what moves it to us. And in this case, the text amendment that was submitted to the City Commission is not the text amendment we're looking at right now. The text amendment as was mentioned that was submitted to the City Commission was the one that eliminated the definition from the subdivision regulations. And.
Go ahead.
Catherine, I think I'm about to get to you by asking the question.
Okay.
How did that happen?
Well, just a point of clarification. When it goes to the City Commission initially, it is not up for approval. It is just for them to initiate. And as part of that memo that is submitted with that consent agenda item, staff is clear that we have not reviewed it, we've not analyzed it, we've not made a recommendation at that time, so it is not approved by the City Commission at that time. It is just initiating the process, basically. And that can be initiated by a private individual, it could be initiated by you all, like you could request that initiation, or it could be requested by staff. And they would just proceed with the initiation or deny the initiation at that point. They don't want to entertain that at all, they don't need a recommendation from anybody. So at this point, it was just initiated. So then it comes to you for the first consideration. You all will be making a recommendation to the City Commission, who will then review and ultimately decide whether or not to approve a text amendment. And that can happen also, for instance, in cases like if we were to amend the subdivision regulations, that's a joint jurisdiction chapter of our code, so that would require a recommendation from you all to the City Commission, and then also to the Board of County Commissioners. So that's a, a multi-jurisdiction approval process. So that, just a point of clarification on that process.
So I'm, I'm concerned about that because, as most of you know, I got hacked. I had my computers now in isolation being cleaned up. So I got the agenda packet, and I did not see any of the information from the June 3rd meeting of the City Commission. And Denny kindly provided that to me today. And when I looked at the application and what the City Commission was asked to do, that was to eliminate the definition of unnecessary hardship that was found in the subdivision regulations. That is what was initiated. That is not what we're looking at tonight. So I don't see how we can move forward with this discussion any further tonight because I don't think we're considering what was initiated.
So I can let Randy answer that question, because we did discuss that with Legal and the applicant, as whether or not they wanted to modify the request.
Other commissioners got all that City Commission application, did you?
Real quick, yeah, I do want to say, we'll go to Randy with that question, but if you're looking for it, it is not in your packet. So you have to go to the June 3rd City Commission meeting, and then look through and find the packet that was presented for that meeting, and that's where you'll see what the request was by the applicant and the applicant's answers to some questions, and also the memorandum of the Judge Simpson's memorandum that was added to this packet this evening. So if you're looking for it, that's where it is.
So that was my mistake. I should have linked that June 3rd meeting in the agenda packet, which, so I apologize for that, I should have had that linked.
So at the very least, I don't think we are, have the information, because we don't. And I'm very glad that I was able to get it, but I think all the commissioners need to be able to see all of that information, because I, I don't think it's fair to ask anybody else to make the decision that that isn't what was passed on to us from the City Commission that we're being asked to look at tonight. I think that becomes an amendment, perhaps that the Planning Commission would want to initiate, or the City Commission would initiate, or Mr. Watkins would like to initiate another one. I can't believe that, you know, I just don't think we can go on this one tonight, particularly given the fact we don't have all the information.
Yeah, so Catherine, let me just, let me see if I can understand what you said. So you said that the City Commission initiates the process, they don't weigh in on sort of the content, they just, they just start the ball rolling, and then we sort of take the ball from them. And so if the applicant is comfortable with what we're going to vote on tonight, isn't that sufficient? Because essentially, they basically gave the applicant the right to pursue his request, correct? They didn't say anything about the language one way or the other. Is that?
That's, that's the way I understand, that's why I asked Randy to maybe weigh in.
Yeah, can we have Randy weigh in as well?
Because it does have to go back to.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. Let me try to explain kind of what happened. It is, it's kind of confusing, and it has to do with the adoption of the new code. Previously, there was a definition of unnecessary hardship. It was the old definition that applied to use variances. That is what the BZA applied historically. That was what the applicant was seeking to change. The, when the new code came in, they moved all the definitions to the end, and Becky, Becky can correct me if I'm incorrect about this. And then they decided that was problematic, because then there was two definitions of unnecessary hardship in the definition, so they eliminated one. Then they decided that was problematic that they moved the subdivision definitions to the end, and unbeknownst to anybody, they moved them back, and that removed the unnecessary hardship from the general definitions, unbeknownst to anybody. So when the applicant sought to change that definition, the only place that it now occurs in the city code is within the subdivision regulations. But what they were trying to do was set forth what the standards were for unnecessary hardship for BZA, and that was the application. And I think the applicant can say that's whether or not that's true or not. That's. That's what the City Commission forward to the city staff to work on, and that's what they've been doing. Is that correct, Becky or applicant?
Yes, Randy, that you adequately summarized what happened there, at least with the definitions in the Land Development Code.
So it's fair to say that what, what we're considering tonight is consistent with the applicant's original intent, and also what the City Commission, the general thrust of what they were approving, regardless if this lines up exactly with how it was initially conceived?
Well.
And aligns us with state law.
Correct.
Yeah, and so part of that process, when we send those memos for initiation, it basically outlines that we still have to do the analysis. So there may be some tweaks to language, or how that text amendment evolves, and, you know, whether or not we can recommend a denial or approval is based on that analysis. And so whatever is decided here today, if it goes forward, still has to go back to the City Commission for the approval, and so that would basically be the change in language instead of an ultimate removal.
If I, if I may read, the, from the staff report that went to the Planning Commission, that went to the City Commission, what was asked for was a Section 20, 1114B, unnecessary hardship, to eliminate this section. The condition resulting from application of these regulations when viewing the property in its environment that is so unreasonable as to become an arbitrary and capricious interference with the basic right of private property, ownership or convincing proof exists that it's impossible to use the property for a conforming use, use, or sufficient factors exist to constitute a hardship that would in effect deprive the owner of their property without compensation, mere financial loss, or the loss of a potential financial advantage does not constitute unnecessary hardship.
And what the staff is saying is that it went to.
Well, she's not, she's not done.
Okay. So that was a specific part of our code, the subdivision regulations. It was not a general idea of we need to do this. It wasn't even applying to all of the definitions of unnecessary hardship. We used to have one single definition for unnecessary hardship. That did not carry over in the new code. So we're now thinking, and I don't understand why there can possibly be urgency to just change the BZA, when we've got state statutes, we've got case law, we've got a provision in our code that says when we have a conflict with state or federal law, we use the most restrictive one, so that there's a way to deal with conflict. We have been talking about things like net density that we haven't been able to find. Sometimes it's for a parcel, sometimes it's for a project. These are all the kinds of things that we expect as a planning commission to be looking at and amending in our new code. And I think this question of an unnecessary hardship needs to have the study it deserves, and it needs to be an amendment to the new code that applies to all of the uses for unnecessary hardship. And I think that when the City Commission has authorized a specific item, not a general idea, but a specific elimination, which obviously it can't do, because the city and the county both have to do it, we can't take that subject up. We aren't following our own code that we just adopted. It doesn't say, they just have to have a general idea. It, it says that the private property has to include an application with specific questions about why do you need this? And all of the questions that were answered were done in terms of why we needed to eliminate the definition from the subdivision regulations, not why we needed to change the definition for the whole code.
Michael, did you have something you wanted to?
No, that, I think mostly it was just that I think the evolution of the process, what Randy was saying, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, is that, I don't know how many times you said unbeknownst to us, the, the definition had jumped from one place to another. So I think when the applicant submitted his request to the city, he believed it was in one location, and during the errors and corrections reviews, it got moved around, and then when it came to the city attorney's office and the staff, they said, 30 second timeout, this isn't what we thought we were looking at. They conferred with the applicant to collaboratively, like, adjust that and pivot, because then it still regardless has to go back to the city for final approval. So even if they look at it and they go, what the heck were those guys doing? They can stamp it no. But the applicant said, no, 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 this is actually what I was looking for, I just thought it was in this section of the, of the code, and it was not, it had been moved during the errors and omissions or whatever.
That's not what he said. He said during the development of the Land Development Code, he tried to get it in there, he talked to the staff.
Oh, sure.
Those things didn't happen. So his only option was to do it as a private party.
Right.
And so that's why it's important to follow our code sections. And I'm sorry this has happened this way, but I think that this isn't the right way to do it, to just not follow our code. I think it is something that ought to be considered, and ought to be considered as an amendment to our code, just as these other things will be considered.
And on top of that also, it's, it's, there's a difference between eliminating a standard and rewriting it, or reasserting a standard, and so this text amendment is rewriting the standard for, my understanding, at least the definition and the standard for unnecessary hardship in a specific context of the BZA, which is not what the original proposal was actually asking for. And also, I think that it needs, it needs to happen, I think we need to look at unnecessary hardship. I think my first, second, third meeting that I had was when a friend of mine passed out in front of all of us, and I think we were arguing about unnecessary hardship. So this is like ingrained in my head, right? It definitely, I think, is something, every time it comes up, I cringe, I think of Alan. But like, I do think that we need to think about unnecessary hardship, it needs to be looked at. But when I, when I looked through it, I found the words in there at least 10 times, and I found multiple places where it's, it's referenced. And then I went and I read the case law, and then I went and I read the statute, and then I finally found the memorandum that kind of prompted some of this, which specifically says that the judge is not taking up whether or not we can have a stricter standard or a less standard. So there's a lot going on here, and I think most certainly it needs to be looked at. But I think the process that we are going through to throw this in and do this quickly isn't, it deserves more than that, I think, actually, and through the amendment process is kind of where I've come down on, after looking at a lot of what's going on. So that would just be my only thought about, like, oh, well, bait and switch on, like, we asked for this, and it was a mistake, and now we're asking for this, right? There's more going on there, I think, not, not on purpose, right? But it's just more complicated.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney, I just want to let you know, this happens all the time with text amendments. The applicant will come in with one thing, they'll want to amend a certain section, we'll get it to us, the attorney's office, and we'll say, well, no, this would be better in this other section, and it will be moved, it'll be arranged, as long as the applicant is fine with what was presented, which the applicant was fine. We met with the applicant two or three times, he was adamant about eliminating the definition at first, staff was not, not wanting to do that, because it's going to cause much work. Every time unnecessary hardship comes up, someone's going to have to define it, if it's defined in the city code, that resolves that issue before it even happens. I've been to dozens of BZAs, they ask what the meaning of that unnecessary hardship was, even when it's defined. So it's not an easy, it's not an easy subject. So that, if the applicant is fine with what it is, he's the applicant, that's what he was seeking to do. And if he's not fine with it, then we did not accomplish what he was doing, and then that's the problem.
So, go ahead.
Yep, that's it.
I just, I'm not, I can't confess to understanding completely what's going on with, with the sequence and the order of things that have and have not happened, and I'm not challenged that any of that's not important, I'm sure that it is. But I wonder if it is in some way separate from this one simple question that we have here tonight, and that in fact, if, if this is just on its own, without any of the other machinations of process, if this is the right thing to do, wouldn't saying that as a body better inform all of the other stuff that has to go on from here? We don't, this, this would, this would provide the standard definition, it was approved by us, it corrects something, it aligns us with.
But really what the implications of changing this definition there, and wherever we're going to stick it, and it, it's not necessarily inconsistent with any of the laws or anything, but it also isn't necessarily the only standard. There is, the memorandum that is provided doesn't set out a standard for, for what this, this is, and there's really no, this is absolutely the definitional standard of it. So there, there's, this is more complicated, and I think it deserves more of a thought by the Planning Commission and the members of the Planning Commission than a simple text amendment that we haven't had.
So why aren't we doing that then?
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Let's, let's absolutely, I think we need.
Let's dive in.
Let's, yeah, let's, I mean, I think we need a subcommittee to look at this, and I think, I think we need to figure out if this is a text amendment that we want to look at ahead of time or whatever, I think, absolutely.
Could we, could we ask the commission now if they feel like we're already there without a subcommittee?
Except, I think in our old code, we had one definition of an unnecessary hardship that was a general definition, and it applied to everything. This is a proposal to make a special definition just for the BZA. It does not touch all of the other 10 or 12 uses of unnecessary hardship. And I think we'd be making a mistake to then decide, okay, we're going to treat every use of unnecessary hardship with its own definition after we've studied it. I think we want something that's going to be easier to use for everybody to be able to say, okay, what's an unnecessary hardship? If we want a definition in our code at all. And I think that's another perfectly good question to be asking. Do we need one?
Might, might be too complicated to, to create our own and assert it.
And I'll, sorry.
I think Commissioner Marchand.
Yeah, so if I can, I don't want to take the Planning Commission out of this process, because obviously making amendments to the code is, is our charge and within our rights here. But as has been noted several times, this is a complicated issue, it's highly technical, it's, it's a legal issue. Given that, we can spend, this group, we can spend months talking about it, and I doubt that we would have any more clarity on the issue and its implications than we already have now from the professionals that are engaged by the city to provide us guidance on legal issues. Me personally, I am comfortable asking Randy, as we have several times tonight, if what is being proposed is in line with Kansas case law, if what is being proposed and how it's being proposed and how it's come before us is in line with procedures and the charges of this body and the City Commission. We've heard affirmative answers on both of those points. I'm comfortable moving forward, getting this done, this particular piece, because this was a, an amendment, a specific amendment that has been brought to us by a private citizen. I'm comfortable taking action on that tonight. To the extent that there are other concerns about how the code works, how defined terms work within that, what unnecessary hardship means in other sections, by all means we should consider it, but that shouldn't foreclose any action on what is before us tonight. Agreed.
Michael, did you?
Okay, I, I agree with Commissioner Marchand, I was just going to add, sorry, I was just going to say that I think this, it clarifies things, so it may be, maybe not a, I mean, yes, maybe there's a lot of complicated things that we're not thinking about, but if it makes it easier to sort of read the code, I think it's a good thing. I'm not thinking of unintended consequences, but anyway, that's, yeah, that's all, yeah.
Did you?
I just started saying, it doesn't make for the whole code, it just does for the BZA, which is different than the whole code.
Right, right.
It's very specific.
Very specific, very specific, yeah.
Any other thoughts, discussions?
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we approve the text amendment AMDT-25-003 to Chapter 20 of the City of Lawrence Code to update the definition of unnecessary hardship, as included in the staff report with two additional changes. One, that the use of unnecessary hardship in subsection 3 be lowercase, and then two, that the new language included in some, subpart A be prefaced with clarifying language, noting that this is only, the language only applies with respect to this section 7A, 3A.
Second.
Looks like we have a second? All right. Any further discussion on this?
I'd make one comment before we close. If you haven't already, and I'm sure everyone has, to read the attached memorandum, decision and journal entry. It is an absolutely brilliant example of what, how the courts think about what we do, and the words that we use, and the things that we say, and how important all of that is when it comes down to a decision. I just want to add that though.
Others?
Can I just, one comment?
Yes.
Marcy had said something about making the owner plural, I don't want to open a can of worms, but is that something that we can just?
I think we could look at that, I think, is it in the same section, or is it in section below? Because that would be maybe a typo and correction.
Never mind, never mind. Different, never mind.
I think if that's a typo, it's just a script error, we'll correct it.
Okay.
So I would just like to say, I plan on voting against this, I don't think now is the right time. I do appreciate the amendment to say that it's specific as to only this, but I think probably the better course was the applicant's original request, which was to remove the standard from the code, or to make the definition that we want and be clear about it. I'm a capital, uncapitalized, lowercase kind of person, so that we can find and figure out what we're defining and what means what where. And I think that this was presented and not addressed during the Land Development Code, and I'd be curious as to why and what, and what the thoughts are with that, and what they were thinking in the sense of how this definition would flow with all the other places in which this definition is mentioned. I'm also concerned, because we now have two different standards that we're setting out, and the standard that's currently in there may be applicable only to use variances, although I don't think all of it is only applicable to use variances. Some of it, the courts are still applying to area variances, which means the definition that we have in there, portions of it could still stand, and the current definition that has been proposed lowers the burden of proof, it flips some of the language to actually not be as clear as what the standards are. And so I have concerns about what the language is that we are supplementing in, without thinking about how it would react, or how it would filter throughout the entire use of the code, or the citizens who come in front of the BZA knowing what to expect. And I hate to put any burden on citizens to have to go through a lawsuit to figure this out. I think it's better if we're more direct, and we have a code that more represents what citizens can expect without having to go through that effort.
I'd like to say that I agree with Commissioner Hayden, I plan to vote against it. I'm very disappointed that we did not have the complete city packet of information into our Planning Commission packet tonight, and I hope in the future, when we're following the code, we will also get the backup documents. Secondly, I, I think that having two definitions, one in the subdivision regulations and, and one for the Board of Zoning Appeals, is a very big mistake, I think we need one. And I don't think we just short-circuit a difficult process of getting both the city and the county to agree, because I think that's an important process. And I, I think that this is a very unfortunate short-circuiting of that process.
How urgent is this that we do this tonight?
We have a pending motion, so let me ask Jeff, is it, I mean, I suppose we're still in discussion, so we're having further discussion, so yes, you can ask that question. I apologize, I just wanted to make sure, you can ask that.
I did ask that.
Yeah, I know, but I had to make sure whether or not it was allowed, and yes, so how, how urgent is it?
What is the urgency that we do this tonight? And I might ask, could I ask the? And I might ask, could I ask the applicant what he thought the urgency was? Is that a...
We do have a pending motion, so I think it'd probably be better to direct that to staff.
There's not an immediacy to that one, but it does bring clarity to the actions that the Board of Zoning Appeals does. And so it does help them in maintaining their work. And as you all know, the appeal route from the Board of Zoning Appeals is not to the city commission, it's the district court immediately. So the clarity does help them in, in doing and conducting their work, and it also helps staff in advising applicants if they are looking to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals with what that would be. So there's not an immediacy to it, but we do think that it is helpful in bringing that clarity to both the board and the citizenry need.
And to not do that tonight, does that change what the, legally what the zoning Board of Appeals might be faced with from a citizen and lawsuits or...
It's a little bit beyond my purview. I mean, it would basically be that there wouldn't be that definition there, and somebody would have to go challenging the courts potentially to get to that definition because it is not stated in, in local code. Kind of to Randy's point, when it's in the local code, it makes it a very immediate jump to this is the standard to use, and this is for the board to apply. It kind of clarifies that immediately for both the board, the staff, and anybody applying to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that immediacy is kind of helpful in, in guiding as, you know, do I want to apply it for this variance or not? So the intent of the code and the rewrite was to always make it approachable and make it convenient for people to use. And we thought this was an amendment that did both of those things. It made it a little bit more approachable and understandable, but also convenient for everyone to use. So again, while we are going to do a cleanup amendment, we thought that the applicant's amendment was a great jumping off point because we thought there was some urgency to that to, so there was clarity as part of the process.
So by omission, then you were saying, we are going to have to come, come back if we were to initiate a text amendment that spoke to this issue or staff or city council, someone is going to have to come back and do that?
Correct.
Okay.
And this, and this is setting a standard. So this is, right? So if we didn't, if there's something, currently something that's not in there, they could either look to the definition in section 11 or decide, oh, that's not the applicable definition, we're going to have a different definition. That would all be kind of a little bit more up in the air. This is putting a concrete standard, but it's also then creating a concrete standard through this process, which is part of my concern. Any other further discussion? All right. I'm all in favor of the motion to approve the variance. Raise your hands.
For the language?
Text amendment, sorry. The text amendment regarding variances, the undue hardship for variances. All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries.
Before we move on, could I ask that we follow up on the conversation we're having about exploring this subject further and how we might charter a group to...
No, we voted on it.
No, 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 this is done, but the, the larger work of consistent definition of unnecessary hardship across the whole body of, of the code.
Sure, I mean, we're, we're moving into miscellaneous items, so how about you just hold on one second, we'll raise it then. So I think that at this point, we're done with that part of the agenda. We'll move into miscellaneous new or old business. And so Mr. Commissioner Rexrode, would you like to raise some miscellaneous business?
Very much. There was an interesting, interesting thought that, and as Jane had pointed out so well, the need for consistency is a very deep subject. And it's something that, there's so much subjectivity and ambiguity, and maybe that's found in, in all the various definitions that are out there. So this idea of paneling a small group to go explore that and come back with a recommendation on how, where, and what those changes might be, is a pretty interesting idea to me.
Awesome. Anybody else?
Be happy to serve as the person on the, on the subcommittee that worked on the land development code to somehow let that get through.
Yes, it's my understanding you're saying, talking about like looking at this idea of undue hardship and how it's, how it would play throughout the entire code.
Play throughout the code, what consistency needs to be, where, where it needs to be, what definition.
Yeah, I think it's a really good idea.
I, to clarify there, Commissioner Rexrode, your suggestion is, is just with respect to the use of unnecessary hardship, or is this more, let's figure out defined terms and clean up the code generally?
Specific to unnecessary hardship.
Okay, you're not wanting to bite off a little thing.
No, 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 no.
I believe staff's taking care of that. It looks like Jeff has something he wants to say.
If I may be so bold, I'd actually recommend against that item at that point in time because I think to Commissioner Munch's point, I think that's a discussion that needs to be had amongst the 10 of you at all times as part of that conversation so there's equity and information and understanding in the code. My worry is, is that we just have the consultant do all of that work to do the definitional work for that one with the knowledge that the subdivision regulations will come in a separate amendment later on. And that's why it was not touched as part of our land development code, and that's why you have that inconsistency in there. And there's, Becky's got a list of inconsistencies between the new code and the subdivision regulations that she is reminding me every day that we need to initiate and get to work on. But I, I have a concern that if a subcommittee works on that aspect of it, there may be some incongruent language that would end up coming back to you all that you would not agree with. So I don't necessarily disagree that there needs to be the discussion, but I would actually recommend maybe having it amongst the 10 of you as a body instead of as, as an ad hoc or a subcommittee portion to it.
How do we do that?
I think that could be part of the cleanup text amendment that we do when we bring forward some of the items. When the city commission initiates that, it would come back and we can make sure to include that as part of that initiation request and see if the city commission would like us to take a look at that as part of that process.
Could we also do that as a work session in mid-month?
Looking at undue, unnecessary hardship?
That conversation?
We can certainly, so we, we will put that on, we have a couple of items that we're working out. We will definitely take that as a potential topic, talk to staff about how that would work, what that would look like, and then think about there. But I would, yes. But I would like to say though that everything you just said in the miscellaneous new business is why I was concerned about what we just did, right? And all, what you're saying is, yeah, I agree with 100%. Yes, we needed to look at this and look at it harder because there's a lot more to be said here. And so I, as we move forward with text amendments, I just caution us to really think about making text amendments on the fly versus thinking and looking at them all holistically. And I don't know why we would look at unnecessary hardship separate from the bigger conversation that you're talking about that we need to have when we look at, or that Jeff was mentioning that we may actually end up having when, when a text amendment gets, when the text amendment gets initiated.
That is just, that is my two cents on that. It's totally in the commission's prerogative, but I would just advise, knowing what's coming with the code in whole, I just wanted you to have the full information for consideration.
Absolutely yield to that, all that wisdom.
Yes. Commissioner Eldridge?
If we yield to that, I would hope that when we look at text amendments, and particularly when we look at unnecessary hardship, what we did tonight is up for consideration again as part of unnecessary hardship. Did it not be excluded from the whole look at unnecessary hardship?
Yeah. Thank you. Any other comments or discussions on that or any other new or old business? I see none, so I'm with, Becky, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
All right. And with that, I will look for a motion for adjournment.
Move.
All right, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Let's go.
Any opposed?
Sorry.
Any abstentions? All right, motion carries, we're adjourned.
Another great meeting, Chair.